Call to order, road call, and establish a quorum for the City of Perkins regular meeting Tuesday, May 13th, 2025, 6:00 PM.
Mayor?
Yes.
Vice Mayor's absent. Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes. Stand and pray with me, please. We just come to you now, and we just thank you for another opportunity to serve our community and to serve you. I pray your blessings upon each and every family represented in this room tonight. Thank you for our guest. I pray, Lord, for wisdom tonight as we make decisions that affect the citizens of this community and this city. In Jesus' precious name, amen. For our pledge of allegiance tonight, we have some special guests here to help lead us. Come on up, boys and girls, well, teachers. So will the teachers come up and introduce themselves as well?
Sure.
We brought these lovely people.
Who do you want us to face?
Will just tell me.
I'm Sean DeGrandeau. I work at the intermediate. I'm the Title VI Indian Education Certified Tutor and NASA co-sponsor, Native American Student Association co-sponsor.
And I'm Erica Peyton, the Indian Education Coordinator for the district, and I also am the Family Consumer Sciences teacher and FCCLE sponsor.
Well, I know who y'all are, but tell them.
I'm Zane Peyton. I'm a junior at Perkins.
I'm Jake.
Mr. Native.
Say it again, Mr. What?
Mr. Native American PT.
Yay.
I'm Jake Hart. I'm a sophomore at Perkins Rowan High School. I'm the president of our Native American Student Association and the student representative.
My name is Ray Payton, and I'm the secretary of our NASA program, and I'm also a freshman.
My name's Hannah Hart. I'm eighth grade in middle school.
This is Bodie Peyton, and he's in pre-k.
Okay, well, we're gonna do Oklahoma pledge of allegiance as well tonight, okay? Go ahead, guys, whenever you're ready.
I salute. Pledge of allegiance.
Stuck by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of Oklahoma. Its symbols of peace unite all people.
Thank you, guys, for coming in such a busy week. Appreciate you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Some of y'all need to stop growing so fast, by the way. Number four, consideration and action on consent agenda. Commissioners, anyone?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes. Number six, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve agreement with Judge John Kamel. Judge, would you like to speak?
I can give a brief report, too, on the court system if the mayor desires, council members desire.
Let me hear it.
All right. We have the traffic docket still going three times a month in this room, and the juvenile docket in closed quarters next door. I handle the juvenile docket and one traffic docket. Judge Shaw is off here, handles the other two traffic dockets, and he handles all of the trials on one of his traffic dockets for those folks that have pled not guilty and need a hearing. It seems that the court goes very efficiently quickly. We process a lot of cases, anywhere between 20 to 50 on any given night, plus there's a lot of folks that just take care of theirs in advance by working directly with the court clerk and pleading and paying the citation fee. We do have room to expand on those existing dockets if the council doesn't age more officers or the police force ups. We can, we do have capacity to handle that. And it seems like it works very smoothly the way it's set up now. We typically work on an afternoon docket, so unfortunately, a lot of folks have to take off. We try to accommodate as best we can so folks don't lose their jobs trying to come to court and taking off. And for those that have inability to pay, we're generally very receptive, working out payment plans based on need. We've state has passed legislation recently that requires us to hold cost hearings, so we do that fairly regularly as well for those that are really hardship. And those have all gone, gone very well and fairly efficient. I've been doing this, I guess it's my 18th year, into my 18th year, and I would be happy to serve again if the council so desires. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, anyone? I make a motion to approve agreement with Judge John Kamel.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes. Number seven, consideration, discussion, and possible action to reappoint Judge John E. Kamel Jr. I make a motion to reappoint Judge John E. Kamel Jr.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes. Number eight, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve agreement with Judge Sidney Wade Shaw. Would you say anything, sir?
Mayor, we all continue to be an honor to be part of the court system here, and I would, I agree with the report that Judge Kamel's given. And, you know, I'd be grateful for the opportunity to continue to help. I mean, it's as simple as that. I'm glad that I've had this opportunity, would like to continue.
Thank you, sir. Commissioners, anyone?
Make a motion to approve the agreement with Judge Sidney Wade Shaw.
Second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes. Number nine, consideration, discussion, and possible action to reappoint Judge Sidney Wade Shaw. I make a motion to reappoint Judge Sidney Wade Shaw.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes. I guess we're gonna, Jason, what do you want to? Does anyone make a motion here? Ever gonna make a motion? Number 10, both of office, Judge John E. Kamel and Judge Sidney Wade Shaw. Judge Kamel, you'll be first, Judge Kamel.
You ready? Is that your right now?
Sorry, I've been with kids all day. I, John E. Kamel Jr.
I, John E. Kamel Jr.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly.
And that I will not knowingly.
Receive directly or indirectly.
Receive directly or indirectly.
Any mon, any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable thing.
For the performance or nonperformance of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
For the performance or nonperformance of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear or affirm.
I further swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
That I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As municipal judge for the City of Perkins to the best of my ability.
As municipal judge for the City of Perkins to the best of my ability.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
How you doing?
Pressure's on.
I was here last month, so there you go. I, Sidney Wade Shaw.
I, Sidney Wade Shaw.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive directly or indirectly.
And I will not knowingly receive directly or indirectly.
Any money or valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable thing.
For the performance or nonperformance of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
For the performance or nonperformance of any act or duty pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
I further swear or affirm that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
I further swear or affirm that I will faithfully discharge my duties.
As municipal judge for the City of Perkins to the best of my ability.
As municipal judge for the City of Perkins to the best of my ability. All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Say it again.
Thank you.
Thank you both, judges. Number 11, consideration, discussion, and possible action to renew agreement with J. Trevor Hammons, P. LLC to provide legal services as city prosecutor at a rate of 150 per hour and travel time of $75 per hour, with extraordinary costs and expenses to be reimbursed to prosecutor.
So, I think we're very fortunate to have Trevor. He works very well, the two judges. They just, Tiffany just keeps tracking along, and Trevor's agreed to stay on for another year, same compensation. Only thing that changed on his agreement was the date, so.
Did you want to add anything?
Trevor does a great job for us, and we are very fortunate to have him, and so I appreciate all the work he does.
Appreciate you coming tonight to support them. That's awesome. Commissioners, you have anything to say?
Make a motion to renew agreement with J. Trevor Hammons, P. LLC to provide legal services as city prosecutor at a rate of 150 per hour and travel time of 75 per hour, with extraordinary costs and expenses to be reimbursed to prosecutor.
I second that. Mayor?
You. Sounds strange. Yes.
Sarah?
Yeah.
Jason?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
That one was strange.
I feel like I've been at a slumber party home. Number 12, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve agreement with Charlie Butler for inspection services July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2026, at a flat fee of $1,500 per month.
Charlie does a good job. There's no changes to this agreement. He does all the plan review and all the inspections, commercial and residential.
I make a motion that we approve agreement with Charlie Butler for inspection services July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2026, at a flat fee of $1,500 per month.
A second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes. Number 12, sorry, number 13, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve 2025-2026 agreement with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 142.
The only thing that changed in this agreement is the date, effectively. No other changes.
Okay. Commissioners, anyone?
Make a motion to approve 2025-2026 agreement with Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number 142.
I second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes. Number 14, consideration, discussion, and possible action on a resolution approving issuance by the Perkins Public Works Authority of its issuance of bonds, notes, or other evidences of indebtedness on a tax-exempt or taxable basis in the amount not exceeded $77,000, or in the alternative entering into a lease purchase agreement in the amount not to exceed $77,000 for the purchase of a sewer jetter machine waiving competitive bidding on the issuance of said bonds, notes, and other evidences of indebtedness, or the issuance of a lease purchase agreement. Bob?
We did this, we did a similar thing last month. We had agenda language to take on a loan. When the bank submitted the paperwork to us, it was a lease agreement. So, it's kind of the same thing. A lease agreement, you can opt out of, it's legal. So, we just had to redo the agenda language and the direction from the commission so we could legally enter into the lease agreement. Attorney David Floyd has been involved.
Okay. That was in your report.
Yeah.
Commissioners, any questions on that?
Make a motion to approve the issuance by Perkins Public Water Works Authority of its issuance of bonds, notes, or other evidences of indebtedness on tax-exempt or taxable basis in an amount not to exceed $77,000, or in the alternative entering into a lease purchase agreement in an amount not to exceed $77,000 for the purchase of a sewer jetter machine waiving competitive bidding on the issuance of said bonds, notes, or other evidences of indebtedness, or on the issuance of a lease purchase agreement.
I second that.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes. Number 15, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve Resolution Number 8-2025, a resolution of the City of Perkins, Oklahoma, approving and authorizing the incurring of indebtedness to the aggregate principal of $77,000. Is that enough? Or do I need to read the rest?
If you could read the rest.
By the trustees of the Perkins Public Works Authority to be accomplished by the issuance of, oh, sorry, issuance of bonds, notes, lease purchase obligations, or other evidences of indebtedness on a tax-exempt or taxable basis, for the financing of certain equipment to be utilized by the authority for the benefit of the City of Perkins, Oklahoma, and for paying costs of issuance related herein to approving the award of the sale of said obligations on a negotiated basis, approving the waiver of competitive bidding with regard to the sale of said obligations, and approving the proceedings of the authority pertaining to the sale of said obligations, and approving all other matters related herein to, including execution of all related documents thereto.
This is the resolution based on the previous agenda item.
I make a motion to approve, yes, go ahead.
Move to approve Resolution 8-.
That's all I was gonna read.
25.
Promise you. I make a motion to approve Resolution 8-2025.
That's the third one. Try not to cough my head off.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes. Number 16, consideration, discussion, and possible action to acknowledge notice of award of U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Community Grant CG 02 F80501-0 in the amount of $320,000 for project sewer line replacement to conduct an evaluation of Perkins sewer system.
This is the EPA grant that we've spoke about, and we've been in the process for two years or more. And it was awarded. Staff worked really hard on getting it awarded and jumping through the hoops. There's no, I don't know that there's any action required, but I guess they need to acknowledge the award.
I think because it's a federal grant, it would be marvelous if you wouldn't mind to acknowledge it formally.
Absolutely.
Move to acknowledge the notice of award of the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency Community Grant CG 02 F80501-0 in the amount of $320,000 for project sewer line replacement to conduct an evaluation of Perkins sewer system.
I second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes. Number 17, consideration, discussion, and possible action to utilize automated clearinghouse or ACH to secure network to electronically receive or make payments regarding EPA grant CG 02 F80501-0. Rachel?
One of the conditions of this award is that we utilize a system, a platform called ASAP, and that all requests for payment go through that, and then monies are electronically deposited into our bank account. And anytime that we have to provide banking account information to another party for them to have access, I feel strongly that the governing body should say that's okay to do. So, that's what this is. That's the only way that they will, they will not do paper checks.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Make a motion to utilize the automated clearinghouse, ACH, to secure network for, to electronically receive and make payments regarding the EPA grant.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes. Number 18, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve fiscal year 2026 Community Fire Assistance 8020 reimbursement grant application to Oklahoma Department of Agriculture in the amount of $6,449. Mr. Bargada?
Well, this is a grant we have the opportunity to apply for every year. It's Department of Ag through Forestry and administered through COED. And we're applying, well, to replace a pump. We had, on a brush truck, we started to have some trouble with it during wildfires in March. It's 8020, so it's, I think the numbers are 6450 for the pump, or share would be 30, about 30, 300. So, it's a massive grant, 8020.
Bob, are you interested?
No, I think it's great they're applying. It sounds like it's very much needed.
80 great weeks.
So, we try to apply for all the grants we can. This, this bigger grant has been iffy for us in the past. I'd rate for us to do some work on it, whoever we work in-house. We don't always score very high on it. It's why we may not apply for each year, but hopefully we might have a pretty good chance this year.
So, we had some damage during the fires in March? Or it just wore out, or?
There's a pump on a brush truck that I got on a much larger grant back in '07. We just started to have trouble with it. Big mission, and it's, it's just not a big capacity, and it's just gradually going downhill. It's approximately one years old.
So, yeah, it's reached its life expectancy, correct? Well, hope we get it. Commissioners, anything?
Make a motion to approve fiscal year 2026 Community Fire Assistance 8020 reimbursement grant application to Oklahoma Department of Agriculture in the $6,449.
I second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes. Number 19, consideration, discussion, and possible action to adopt Ordinance 513 and Ordinance Deleting and Replacing Title II Revenue Finance and Business Chapter 8, Claims Amending Title II Revenue Finance and Business Chapter 9, Warrants Disbursement of Funds Amending Title II Revenue Finance and Business Chapter 4, Budget and Declaring an Emergency. Rachel?
This has been on my wish list for years. I have been wanting this for so long, and we started on it a couple of years ago, and then 75 other things happened, and we didn't get it finished up. And so, as part of the EPA grant, we do have to have some of this language. So, that was good. We did push to get it finished. So, it just basically takes most of our practices that are already in place, puts them in ordinance form, so that we've got a nice clean map of how we do a lot of the purchasing types of things.
There's a lot changed in that.
We started with a recommended document from a company called Crawford and Associates. It's an accounting firm out of Oklahoma City, and they specialize in municipal government. They provide a lot of nice free resources. So, that was our jumping off. We put in a lot of hours of cross-checking and making sure that we were putting together pieces, which you could see by how we titled this and titled that, to make sure that we were consistent throughout.
Rachel did 90% of the work on this.
It wasn't, it wasn't a whole lot marked out. There was a whole lot added.
Added. A whole lot added.
Looks like it was bolstered quite a bit.
And we were doing all of it. It just wasn't on paper.
Commissioners, any questions?
Make a motion to adopt Ordinance 513 and Ordinance Deleting and Replacing Title II Revenue Finance and Business Chapter 8, Claims Amending Title II Revenue Finance and Business Chapter 9, Warrants Disbursement of Funds Amending Title II Revenue Finance and Business Chapter 4, Budget and Declaring an Emergency.
I second. Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes. Number 20. Consideration, discussion, and possible action on declaring emergency on Ordinance 513. I make a motion that we declare an emergency on Ordinance 513.
I second it. Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes. Okay, number 21, public hearing, proposed operating budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026. Staff report? I have it.
You want to open the public hearing?
I thought I just did. Okay, so the public hearing is open for anyone who would like Staff report?
So, we had the first budget, official budget meeting last month. This is the culmination of those efforts. I included in the packet my budget message, which will be available to the public after this meeting. Basically, the way we go about the budget is to estimate revenues. We exclude grants that we don't physically have because it's an unknown. This budget is quite a bit higher than the previous year's proposed budget due to the Iowa Tribe Partnership and the fact that they match dollar for dollar, dollar for dollar, $2.113 million for the water tower and lift station. So, when you bring that, that's in this budget, so it increases your actual fund numbers. Sales tax is budgeted at $850,000, which is a 6.4 decrease from fiscal year 25. That's due to the downturn in sales tax collections. That's not just a Perkins problem. That's many communities across Oklahoma. I was looking at Edmund's website earlier, and they're experiencing similar numbers. So, it's, for whatever reason, now, sales tax is down, use tax is up a little bit, so that helps. But we, unfortunately, we don't get the numbers from use tax that we do from sales tax. I think it's really important for people to shop local. It helps your community. It helps us do the things we need to do and provide the services. And in the event you can't shop local, if you shop online, have things delivered into the city limits, the City of Perkins benefits from those fees.
It looked like our use tax was up.
Yeah, use tax is up, and it's been up since COVID.
It's a backup.
I think alcohol's down a little bit.
Alcohol's down.
Franchise fees pretty much are decreased. OGN E went down. ONG, it remains flat. Franchise fees are something that I kind of equate to, if you were lucky enough to have an oil well, how much is really being pumped out of the well, and how do you really know what's happening? I'm just not a very trusting person sometimes. There is, within this budget, the utility rate increase. There is, within this budget, the utility rate increases factored in, that there'll be an agenda item on later, so if that were to change and not be approved in this budget-
Would change.
Would change.
But it's still a little document that has to be-
It's gonna change, well, you approved a litany of, uh, uh- Yeah, budget amendments, and it's always gonna change, but this, this is kind of the base.
All municipalities seem to spend a lot on franchise fees.
Yeah, well, we receive money on the franchise fees. It's basically a fee, or I don't know, I guess it's technically called a fee for them using our right of way.
Okay.
I'm gonna check into some stuff on fiber. I don't know how that's being handled, like our AT&amp;T franchise fee.
We don't have a franchise with AT&amp;T, but, go ahead.
We don't?
It's an ordinance. It's probably 1939 ordinance, I guess.
Okay.
That's what typically happens. Anyway, go ahead.
So that's something I want to look into, because fiber's using the right of ways, and we're not doing anything with that right now. All franchise fees require vote of the people, and it's kind of a long process.
Anyone else? Okay, we're going to close the public hearing of number twenty, I'm sorry, number twenty-one. Proposed operating budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026. Any more discussion from the commissioners? I make a motion that we, that was a public hearing. Number twenty-two. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve resolution number six dash 2025, adopting the city of Perkins operating budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026 in the amount of $9,652,486.
Kind of just covered it. This is the document that would make it official and timely, and a little early, so we can get it off to the state.
Commissioners, anyone?
Make a motion to approve resolution number six dash 2025, adopting the city of Perkins operating budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026 in the amount of $9,652,486.
Second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Number twenty-three. Public hearing, consideration, and possible action regarding the rezoning application of the McWhorter Trust requesting the change of zoning classification of a tract of land located approximately 500 feet west of Casey's General Store on Highway 33 from agricultural to commercial. Public hearing is now open. Nobody, okay. Bob, or staff report?
This, this does exactly what it says, takes that from agricultural to commercial to, it's been through the planning commission, but planning commission recommending for out the city commission, or out of the city commission.
So we shall close the public hearing. Commissioners, do I want to discuss that further? Or?
I make a motion. Is it approval? Motion of approval, okay. I make a motion to approve the rezoning application of the McWhorter Trust requesting the change of zoning classification of attractive land located approximately 500 feet west of Casey's General Store on Highway 33 from agricultural to commercial.
I second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Number twenty-four. Public hearing, consideration, and possible action regarding the specific use permit application of the McWhorter Trust requesting the proposed use of a restaurant on attractive land located approximately 500 feet west of Casey's General Store on Highway 33. Open, the public meeting is, or, sorry, the public hearing is now open. Anyone? All right, staff report?
So this specific use permit would allow a restaurant to be put on the property that you just approved, the subject of change on.
Close the public hearing. Commissioners, any further discussion or action? I make a motion regarding the specific use permit application of the McWhorter Trust requesting the proposed use of a restaurant on attractive land located approximately 500 feet west of Casey's General Store on Highway 33.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Number twenty-five. Public hearing, consideration, and possible action to recommend approval or denial of site plan for R.A. Wilson Enterprises Incorporated on attractive land located approximately 500 feet west of Casey's General Store on Highway 33. The public hearing is now open. No one, so staff report?
This is a site plan for the restaurant, based on the two items you just approved. It's for a Taco Bell. Each of you has a copy of the site plan. It was approved by the planning commission. It's a drive-through restaurant. Taco Bell's gonna build, I think they said eighty-seven of these, I believe, this calendar year. They want to put one here. Awesome.
Timeline.
They said upon issuance of the building permit, which would ostensibly happen tomorrow, should this be approved, they will do the final closing on the property. It'll be a scheduling issue. Once their contractor shows up on site, it'll be open in ninety days.
Nice.
Eighty-seven's actually what he said. I gave him three.
Weather allowance.
Yeah. I think they have it down to a sign.
Okay, closing the public hearing. Commissioners, any discussion or motion?
One question, just because we've had issues elsewhere. Any drainage issues in that area?
No, no, there's the O-Duck Drainage Detention Facilities right behind them, and when their engineers came in, they were super easy to work with. They're gonna impound their water towards the back of the site, be a little ponding area where runoff's not gonna go on anyone else, it's not gonna go towards the highway. There's no issues.
It's all good. Thank you.
So I make a motion to recommend approval of the site plan for the R.A. Wilson Enterprises Incorporated on attractive land located approximately 500 feet west of Casey's General Store on Highway 33.
Second that.
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Number twenty-six. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to accept perpetual easement for the water tower from the Iowa Tribe of Oklahoma located near the northwest corner of the Iowa Tribe of Oklahoma Health Center project consistently, consisting of approximately 660 square feet.
Bob? Since the water tower that we're partnering on's gonna physically be on the Iowa Tribe's property, we need a perpetual easement to allow that to happen. The tribe approved the easement that's in your packet, and staff recommends approval. We're accepting perpetual easement.
Allows us to go in and service.
Yeah, once this is done, then we can work on the contract wording and get it approved and start up.
Commissioners, anyone else with any questions?
I make a motion to accept perpetual easement for the water tower from Iowa Tribe of Oklahoma located near the northwest corner of the Iowa Tribe. Consisting of approximately 660 square.
Second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Number twenty-seven. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve agreement with Western Payne County Ambulance Trust Authority to continue providing ambulance services for the city of Perkins.
This is a pretty standard agreement. Mr. Muller, I missed it, he was so long, we did this the sixteenth of April.
Yeah, he came.
They had it on their agenda, the Western Payne County Ambulance Trust Authority meeting, they had it on their agenda. We sent it to them, they signed it, they sent it back, but it just basically says, you know, they're responsible for what we're responsible for. Pretty standard language, I would think.
And that's the gentleman that came, spoke to us the month before?
Yep, very easy to work with.
Commissioners, any questions? I make a motion to approve agreement with Western Payne County Ambulance Trust Authority to continue providing ambulance services for the city of Perkins.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
By the way, our, our selection, our person that we selected, when it was our turn, she totally enjoyed working with that group. Cassie Weiss. So, number twenty-eight. Consideration, discussion, oh, Wilson now, sorry. Number twenty-eight. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to open bids for 2013 for Taurus as, as is, as is, VIN number ending eight zero three three.
Mayor, for the next several agenda items, there's two vehicles, we don't have any bids on either vehicle.
So no bids? All right, twenty-nine. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to award bid for 2013 for Taurus as VIN number eight zero three three and authorize award to next highest bidder in the event that the highest bidder withdraws. Pass thirty. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to authorize staff to list for sale 2013 for Taurus as is VIN number eight zero three three.
Say it's okay.
Did we?
Yeah. We have to authorize.
Yeah, so we need a, we need a motion, please.
I make a, I make a motion to authorize staff to list for sale 2013 for Taurus as is VIN ending in eight zero three three.
I second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Number thirty-one. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to open bids for 2014 for Taurus as is VIN number ending 2025, twenty-five, twenty-nine. All right. Number one to thirty-two. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to award bid for 2014 for Taurus as is VIN number ending twenty-five, twenty-nine and authorize award to next highest bidder in the event that the highest bidder withdraws. We have no bidders, so-
That's correct, no bidders.
Move on. Thirty-three. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to authorize staff to list for sale 2014 for Taurus as is VIN number twenty-five, twenty-nine.
Question. These are the two that's listed that's sitting right outside.
Yes.
You've had a lot of people looking at them.
Yeah.
Every time I get guests, there's somebody looking at them.
Nobody submitted a bid.
Okay.
Well, and they're also, cost, cost us money to take all the decals and-
Oh, yeah.
And now we're having to store that stuff? Okay, good.
We good?
We good.
I make a motion to authorize staff to list for sale 2014 for Taurus as is VIN ending in two five, two nine.
I second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to, if that's okay with you guys, that we move to the Public Works Authority agenda right now, before we, before we do the executive session? Okay with staff?
Sure.
Okay. So we're gonna open the Public Works Authority regular meeting Tuesday, May thirteenth, 2025.
Mayor?
Yes.
Justin Henninger is absent. Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Should open the other one, never mind. Consideration, action on consent agenda? Anybody? Okay.
I make a motion to approve the consent.
I second. Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
All right. Number five, four, number four. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve Perkins Public Works Authority operating budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026 in the amount of $6,54,928.
This is the second half of, second largest part of the budget. It does include a ten percent increase in water and sewer rates. Davis sanitation rates increased by 1.4% each year pursuant to the contract. In the city manager's report, I talked about increasing cost to operate, and that's kind of the collections are down a little bit, costs are going up, and this is what we could come up with.
The money that we've spent to keep that place costing us more-
Yep.
Is-
It's expensive.
And absorbent amount-
Yes.
Of money. Commissioners, any questions on that? I tell you, I know more about sewer and water than I ever thought I ever would. Thanks, Bob.
Yep.
Taking us to sewer school.
What way of putting it?
I know, right? I make a motion to approve the Perkins Public Works Authority operating budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026 in the amount of $6,54,928.
Second that. Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Number five. Consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve resolution number seven, 2025, a resolution amending water rates and sewer service charge and establishing utility deposits, new service fee, late charges, service call fee, water and sewer tap fees, and landlord administrative fee. Bob?
This is the 10% increase in utility rates that would make it official starting July one. All those rates are in resolution form, and that's the reason for that. So this is a difficult.
I make a motion to approve resolution number seven dash 2025.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Who's my boss, Mayor, we don't need him to reason. Number six.
I saw a number of items on the agenda, and he said, "Nope."
Forty plus whatever. My printer was like, "Stop." Consideration, discussion, and possible action on a resolution approving the issuance of bonds, notes, and other evidences of indebted on a tax exempt or taxable basis in an amount not to exceed $77,000, or in the alternative entering into a lease purchase agreement in an amount not to exceed $77,000 for the purchase of a sewer jetter machine and waiving competitive bidding on the issuance of said bonds, notes, or other evidences of indebtedness, or on the issuance of a lease purchase agreement.
This is the same item from the city agenda that was recommended to be on both agendas to allow us to enter into a lease purchase agreement for the job.
I don't have it on my thing, I don't have that. Uh, let's see, you're on seven, correct?
Six.
Six. Okay, dokie. I make a motion to approve the issuance- Make a motion to approve the issuance of bonds, notes, or other evidences of indebted on a tax exempt or taxable basis in an amount not to exceed seventy-seven thousand dollars or in alternative entering into lease purchase agreement in an amount not to exceed seventy-seven thousand dollars for the purchase of a sewer jetter jetter machine and waiving competitive bidding on the issuance of said bonds, notes, or other evidences of indebtedness or on the issuance of a lease purchase agreement.
I second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Number seven, do you really want me to read all that again?
No, you can say to approve resolution number nine twenty twenty.
What, don't I have to read it before we approve? I mean, after?
Yeah, consideration, discussion, possible action to approve resolution.
Okay, so consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve resolution number nine dash twenty twenty-five? Authorizing and approving the incurring indebtedness of the Perkins Public Works Authority in the amount of seventy-seven thousand dollars. Okay, good. That is. I make a motion to approve resolution nine dash twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Under the Open Meeting Act, this agenda item is authorized only for matters not known about or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time posted. Pass. I make a motion to adjourn regular meeting of the Kurt, yeah, thank you, say that again.
Perkins Public Works?
Perkins Public Works Authority.
I got your back.
Anybody second that?
Second that. Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
I meant ladies to move to the Industrial Development Authority instead of that, so here we go to the Perkins Industrial Development Authority, regular meeting. Y'all didn't have a field day with over three hundred and fifty kids today. Okay. Amy, roll call, please.
Mayor?
Yes.
Jason is absent. Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
All right. Consideration, action, on consent agenda?
Uh, make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second it.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Rhonda?
Yes.
Number four, consideration, discussion, and possible action to approve the Perkins Industrial Development Authority operating budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. Rachel?
This is enough money to pay the auditor and two hundred and fifty dollars for in case we need computer support or to buy checks or snacks. Snacks. Snacks are not listed. Snacks are way more.
Commissioners, any questions?
Make a motion to approve the Perkins Industrial Development Authority operating budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six in the amount of one thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Yes.
Number five, new business. Under the Open Meeting Act, this agenda item is authorized only for matters that were not known about or which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting. Passing on, I make a motion to adjourn the Perkins Industrial Development Authority meeting Tuesday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second that. Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah? Jason?
Ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Renee?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, ladies, for hanging out. Next time I'll start right there. If that's allowable, like. That's true. Thank you. I appreciate that comment.
Thanks for coming.
Okay. Back to our regular meeting. Go down to agenda item thirty-six. Nope, sorry. No, yeah, thirty-four. Motion to enter executive session pursuant to twenty-five O dot S dot three O seven B four to discuss the city's claims possible litigation against K W Investment LLC and any other responsible party regarding the Kinderwells Section Nine infrastructure improvement and drainage issues.
Second.
Is that a motion?
Oh, sorry. That was on me.
I read the motion.
Yeah.
It wasn't a consideration or discussion. It was a motion.
Okay. Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes.
Veronica?
Yes.
Everybody don't say anything.
I thought that one.
I thought it out.
That was a trap.
She's just trying to get us to say all kinds of stuff before she leaves us.
I don't know who approved that.
Been trying all night.
Thank you, Amy.
June tenth was the meeting.
Item number twenty-six, uh, thirty-six, motion to exit executive session and reconvene in open session.
Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Sure.
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Uh, number thirty-five, consideration, discussion, and possible action as a result of executive session regarding claims and possible litigation against K W Investment LLC and any other responsible party regarding the Kinderwells Section Nine infrastructure improvement and drainage issues. I make a motion to direct the city manager to communicate with Carlin Wells of K W Investment LLC and any other responsible parties to provide construction plans and project construction timeline by June sixth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Yes, ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.
Number thirty-seven, consideration, discussion, and possible action to review letters of interest and select candidate for board of adjustment. One open position term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. No one, Amy?
We haven't received any.
Okay. Thirty-eight, consideration, discussion, and possible action to review letters of interest and select a candidate for the library board. Two open advisory members terms ending in December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Thirty-nine, under new business, the Open Meeting Act, this agenda item is authorized only for matters not known about which could not have been reasonably foreseen. And number forty. I make a motion to adjourn the city of Perkins regular meeting twenty. Oh, my goodness.
Say, what's the?
May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Mayor?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Jason?
Ma'am.
Veronica?
Yes.